December the 7th, 2021, 6:30 PM. Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Sager, if you would like to say.
I pray. Lord repulse to give you thanks for every blessing of life. And thank you for the life of this city. We thank you for the opportunities you have given us this day. Hopefully, we have met those in a manner that is pleasing to them. We thank you for this season. It's the greatest gift you could give us, for the return of Jesus Christ. Help us to celebrate this season in its true meaning. Blessed is counsel and those who attend. Give us wisdom and make decisions for all decisions of our own. This is my prayer in the name of the Lord.
Very thankful, in the presence of the Lord.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a little presentation before we start tonight. With the approval of the minutes. You got to be the first one to come over to put the mic. All right, Lisa.
Mayor and council. We participated in the litter pickup campaign that is done statewide called Gravel Bag SC. This is the Lieutenant Governor's Project in coordination with Cometa Pride. We participated on November 13th. And in those three hours, we had forty volunteers cover more than six miles, collect sixty bags of trash, two tires, and a mattress. A total of three hundred and eighty-one pounds of trash off of our streets. Of those volunteers, we had Mayo High School Data Club and Environmental Club represented. I don't believe they can be here tonight. And the Darlington County Intervention School, JROTC. They would come, come in. And the Darlington Learning. We had, the mayor was there at the beginning of our event and put out a challenge to the group that got the most trash off the streets. He'd give them a hundred dollars. So, there he is presenting his hundred dollars.
Then she, then she called me and told me it was almost a tie, so we got two or nothing. So, but if you, we, we walk around all the time to pick up trash all the time. And I was going to Georgetown the other day for my son to shoot Saturday and turned by Francis Marion and just astonished at all the bags of trash on the side of the road that some volunteers there had picked up. That was this past Saturday. We're behind sometimes you see ten full bags packed there together. And, and so, we appreciate your service for coming out and, and it's, it's a big help to the city. But it's also a help to you to realize that, and others, that to not trash your city. Because, you know, I've always been given a hard time about the small things, but the cigarette butts and trash cans and bags and stuff just left on the side. All that adds up to three hundred something pounds in just a few hours. And so, I tell people it's the detail. And as y'all are a perfect example of detail. So, if you come in and your buttons aren't buttoned right and all this kind of stuff, you, you're, they're going to hit you, right? Yes, you want to look sharp, you want to present yourself well, you want to make sure your, your ammo is in place. Make sure your gun's shined up and you're ready to go. And your weapons are ready. So, so every detail, that's what they're trying to teach you is detail. And so, in the city, detail is very important. And we appreciate the sanitation guys are all coming out and taking care of cleaning up our cities. And so, our goal is to man, to manicure our city to where it looks, when people ride through, they say, oh, that's a beautiful place. We would love to come visit Darlington. And so, no matter where you're at, we, we challenge everybody to do that. Stop and pick up trash. A lot of times, people won't do that. They won't, you know, that's somebody else's responsibility. It's your world and your place, and we all live in it together. So, sometimes you have to do stuff behind other people that don't want to take care of their, their surroundings. So, we greatly appreciate it. I wish I could do a lot more. But we, we present you with a check. And I think y'all said y'all were going to take MIB or something. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you for, for having them come out. For having them come out also.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anybody wants to do a litter collection, I have plenty of bags and gloves and vests and trash picker-uppers. If somebody wants to organize one outside of one of the days that the city doesn't.
And that's probably your best, probably our best turnout.
Yes, definitely. Thank y'all.
Do I have a motion for approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting for November the 9th, 2021?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our regular city council meeting of November 9th, 2021.
Mr. Gardner has a sick child and he's on the speakerphone. Mr. Gardner? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion for approval of? Before, before I do this, I need to make an amendment to the council meeting tonight. I would like to have a short discussion on adding trees to the public square. Just have a discussion for that tonight. To possibly add that to new business E. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the amended agenda for approval, discussion on the tree, putting trees on the city square discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added items on the new business E, trees on the square.
Sager, Mr. Ryan, Carter? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Reporter standing committees, the Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association. Mrs. Bailey?
Thank you. The DRA hosts its annual holiday shop Darlington contest. That is kicked off. It runs between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Shop at any five different Darlington businesses. Send in your receipts with an entry form, and that's a chance to win a hundred dollars cash. And every five receipts from five different businesses is another entry. So, as many as you want to enter, as much as you want to shop in town, please do. The more you shop, the more entries that you will be able to make in the contest. Restaurants count. Any of the shops count. The only thing that does not count is prescriptions and fuel purchases. Because obviously, we want you to stay in town, not leave. You can also download a copy of the entry form at buildupdarlington.org/shop Darlington. It's also in the news and press each week from Thanksgiving to Christmas, if you need a copy. We also continue to make plans for the DRA's New Year's Eve Block Party on December 31st. The Level Ten Bandit Show will be back in town to ring in the new year. Southern Events Photography will have a photo booth to create fun keepsakes. And the Darlington Fire Department will help with the balloon drop at midnight. We're working on some other special touches to the event. So, if your business would like to get involved, call my office. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on our social media and through our news alert system. Each week, our alerts reach more than twenty-seven hundred people. We continually update our website, buildupdarlington.org, where individuals can submit information or sign up to receive these alerts. And they'll come directly to your phone on a text message or they'll come via email, whichever way you choose. Membership in the DRA is open to businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches. Members can give me a call or send an email to info@buildupdarlington.org for information. And we will feature their news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, special events, with people that are interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through those news alerts. Any questions?
Thank you. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce?
Hello. So, we had a lot going on this past weekend. We had the Christmas parade. We had the Christmas tree lighting. We also had a minute at the country club. So, tomorrow night, we are having our December Business After Hours at Covered in Cotton. It'll be from 5:30 to 7:00. The address is 2080 Society Hill Road. Also, again, Dance with the Stars is January 27th at the Hartle Center Theater. We have been sending out invoices and we are getting a lot of membership renewals back. And we also are getting a few new orders. Speaking of memberships, our annual banquet, our annual membership banquet is February 24th from 6 to 8. It is at the Grand Ole Post Office. And last time I was here, I did mention that I would possibly, possibly be working from home due to updates in the change of building. However, the contractor did back out. So, Landmark Properties did open up the bid again for contractors to come in. Also, the New, the New Year's Eve Block Party with the DRA will be December 31st. Also, Dominion Church will be having their Christmas show on December 19th. Also, FPC is doing a food drive with Harvest Hope Food Bank. So, you can go into any of their locations right now. There's just a little box. Shake up a reindeer and you can drop the beef off into it. That is all that I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of comments. So, if you keep it to five minutes, we appreciate it. Craig Blair?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a member of the Darlington Task Force of Concerned Citizens. And each membership have one of these lists on their desk. And I was asked to present these for some proposed streets in need of infrastructure. And I would like the council to take into consideration some of these streets. And also, if possible, that we can have something in writing on the cost. And if they have taken any of this into consideration at the next council meeting. Thank you.
All right, Reverend Woodbury?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Pastor Leo Woodbury. I'm the Executive Director of New Outford Community Development Incorporated, headquartered in Florence, South Carolina. We do work regionally as well as statewide and nationally. And thanks to Lisa and the staff, you already have packets. And this really brief overview, I hope, will lead to further discussion with the city staff and with the council, as we are currently doing with the city of, with Lake City and with Florence, as well as state legislatures. So, five things. First is that we are working with others on setting up ceasefire zones where areas much like a drug-free zone can be established in cities with legislation passed to try to reduce the shooting that is epidemic in our communities. Two is President Biden's executive order 14008 that is tasking all seventeen federal agencies to take forty percent of their sustainability investments and give that to distressed communities starting next year. We're talking about billions of dollars. And we have met with fifteen federal agencies, including the Council on Environmental Policy, which is housed at the White House. The third thing is that we also want to discuss with the city, setting, setting up a resilience and sustainability commission. So, that will help the city of Darlington deposition to receive federal funding through the state, through the newly established Resilience Sustainability Office headed by Ben Duncan, that was set up by Governor McMasters. And many cities are doing this. So, Columbia has a resilience and sustainability commission. Florence just set up one that's about to be acted. The final, the next thing is also looking at the city possibly doing a resolution to make this a renewable city, which can open the door for funding for energy efficiency, solar, electric vehicles, et cetera. We're currently working with the South Carolina Office of Regulatory Staff and Office of Energy on putting together the state's EV plant for South Carolina. And then last but not least, we also want, want to talk about some other issues, environmental issues around sustainability. So, thanks to Lisa, who has already given you a packet on southern communities for green and yield. And we hope that we can work with both the council, the city management, Mayor Boyd, and others to ensure that some of these billions of dollars get to Darlington, the community's very much in need. So, I'll contact information in the packet. And we thank you for your time and your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn Woodhead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Lynn Woodhead. This past weekend, we had the parade. And then we had the carol. I just want to make a comment about the Speaker at the carol. He was our own chief, Washington. I don't know if he's here tonight. But personally, I think we ought to have him back again next year. I think he needs to go to every church in our community and preach one Sunday. Every one of them. We're having a, and I say we, the Kiwanis Club, who sponsors the caroliting, is having a meeting Monday. I suspect that that's going to be brought up, that he be our speaker next year. But if you wasn't there this past Sunday afternoon or evening to hear him speak, hopefully, you'll be there next year, if he speaks. He is a wonderful speaker.
Yes, he is.
And he's an asset to the city.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and general public. I am Joyce Thomas. I'm a member of the Darlington County Council. And what I would just like to say, I think it's imperative that we all work together. I do have a, just a short clipping from one of the papers, actually, Community Times, in reference to the city of Darlington. Planning Department wants your input. Well, in order to get your input, everybody needs to know what's going on. Now, everybody doesn't buy papers all the time. And of course, this is, I think it's maybe a bi-weekly paper. I take it. But this paper is not conducive to everybody across the city. Many people don't even read the paper. So, I asked prior, when I came up here maybe one, no, two months ago, to have something sent out in maybe one of the board bill or something, so everybody, at least the majority of the citizens, will find out what's going on in the city of Darlington. Doesn't matter where you live, as long as you're in the city of Darlington. Somebody would know something. And I don't even know whether the ministerial allowance would be, you know, agency that we can talk about in reference to. But we have to get the word out to everybody. We just can't get a portion of the news out. Also, I would like for you to reconsider. And I've read this in the paper, where you meeting at. It said, Joe's Grill, I believe, on this one. Joe's Grill. Dates are December 3rd, 10th, and 17th. And of course, you have to schedule for January. But please, if you would kindly reconsider the places, time, and location, so it would be accessible to everybody. I think it would work much better with the city and all involved. And the second thing that I would like to say is in reference to leadership and commitment, just in general, information. Community leadership and development and commitment will make everybody working together, collaboration. We need to get together as a city and as people. We all here working for the same thing, I'm hoping. So, let's, please, Mr. Mayor and Council, let's, let's work together a little more. And of course, support each other and the neighborhoods. Doesn't make any difference where you live. Let's support one another. And maybe visit some of the places. And I, I don't know, sometime in the town, we'll get on the van and just go around. And I don't know if this is what you all would prefer. But I would be more than glad to entertain, just visiting some of the neighborhoods. Some people don't even know that other, such a different city exists. But I certainly would hope that we would get together on this as a community, so we can all work together before we start spending all the rescue money and all the things that we haven't even got there yet. But I look forward to working with everyone. And I would appreciate if you, like I said, reconsider when we having this meeting. Because, Mayor, everybody would like to see you and know who you are. Thank you kindly.
Joyce, you have any suggestions as to other places that we could consider?
Well, I, I do have, but I think it would be better in a group setting if everybody could get together and kind of maybe majority, just kind of talk about. Rather than just one, one or two places out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. All business. Second reading, business license standardization ordinance 2021-17.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the second reading. This is a requirement by the South Carolina General Assembly. It requires us to change or to standardize our business license to be from May 1st of the given year to April 30th. In your packet, you'll see the new rates. Again, we did not calculate these numbers. These numbers were given to us. But this is requirement. We have to have second reading by December 31st. So, I ask that we do that soon.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the second reading of the business license standardization ordinance 2021-17.
All right. Ms. Beckus? Sager? Mr. Gardner? Mr. Gardner? Is it aye? Motion carries, aye? Thank you. All right. Do second reading of ordinance 2021-18 to reacquire Hewitt Street Alley from Darlington County?
Yes, sir. You'll recall, the city gave to the county from Fountain to Hewitt Street, down to Hewitt Alley.
Right.
The county does not need Hewitt Alley now because of the courthouse. They've asked us to reacquire it. This is second reading. And if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance 2021-18 to reacquire Hewitt Street Alley from Darlington County.
Mrs. Beckus? Mrs. Reed? Okay. Mr. Gardner? Okay. Aye. Okay, thank you. Motion carries?
Thank you.
All right. Take another minute of your time. A lot of times, we give out different things for people like the key to the city and so forth like that. When I became mayor, Mayor Mr. Hardy, Mr. Hardy, if you can come on up. Trying to talk about this and some different things. And there's a lot of people in life that don't get recognized until after they die. And I said, well, I like, I always wanted to go to my own funeral. So, I can see who shows up. I enjoy it and let you know where I'm going. And so, well, you can go there with me. So, not that these persons may die or anything. A lot of people, like I said, your white hats, where'd you go? That was a great person and so forth. But there's a lot of great people that live amongst us. And when they're, they're kind of just left to the side, not really recognized as much as they should be. And so, we come up with what I call, we call the Order of the Pearl, okay? Which is for somebody in the city or the area, not necessarily live in the city, but somewhere in Darlington that has really just portrayed and helped a lot of people throughout their lifetime. And I've given out, I said, I've been mayor now for two years. We started this back two years ago with the idea. And then the pandemic hit and couldn't really be around anybody. And finally, got to where the first person I gave it to was Harvey Drawdy, for the principal at the paid school. And he had touched lots, lots of children's lives and people's lives. And so, the second person I had on my list, in particular order, but I got a good little list. And been trying to find the right time, place to do it. Didn't, I don't know exactly where to do it. And so, we decided we'd do it tonight here. This person was, is very inspirational and has done a lot for everybody in the neighborhood and cities of Darlington. And so, I have known for years since I was a child and has asked to come tonight. Ms. Brunson? Ms. Lillian Brunson? I thought she was my first, I thought I was the first child that she had, but I was her second year. But she, I was in the third grade when she was my first teacher. And people, you know, leave a last remark on it. And she's taught, taught a lot of people in schools. So, that's, that was almost, I guess, about fifty years ago, right? And she's taught a lot of people in school. She has taught a lot of people with the Girl Scouts. And she's taught everybody, I think, in town to swim, but me. I'll jump into, I'll jump in the pool without a deep end. But she still does swimming lessons and helps everybody out. And so, you've been a big inspiration and we love you. Okay?
I love you very much. All right, one, two, please.
And we, we lied to her. Did I just say that what she was going to do? Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I just said, I love living here. It's a good town. I've been here all of my life, except for when I was in college and when my husband was in the Air Force. And I love it here. I love teaching swimming, love teaching school, love the Girl Scouts. Especially love teaching swimming. And I've been doing it now for forty-eight years. And I hope I'm going to be doing it for a few more. Want to make at least fifty, so. We're going, we're going to keep working on it. And my sons keep telling me that I need to start training somebody else to take my place. So, I guess we need to start working on that too. So, you know, a couple more years, we'll get somebody else out there to help people learn how to swim.
So, I want to say this for, my boys, both of them, learn to swim a little out there amongst those ten thousand children she taught to swim. We tempted a little boy, came home and he said, Daddy, Ms. Brunson floats. And she has the ability. What, what'd you tell me?
We hang in the water.
That she hangs in the water. If you've never seen that, for your only person I've ever seen that does that. But she can child after child after child after child. And she just hangs in the water while she goes. So, we estimated she taught five thousand children to swim over the years. So, it's been a bunch in it. So, she's got five thousand children to swim and five thousand Girl Scout cookies she's serving. On behalf of me, that's for the children.
Okay. Hanging off the stuff. Well, I don't know how the, the hanging is going to go this year. I hope it's going to go really well, but I just got a new hip. And it's with the metal in there, I don't know if I'm still going to just hang in the water.
All those Brunsons standing up just for me and looking with ladies' families.
All those Brunson standing up just for me, looking with Lillian's family, all these Brunsons here.
I had a problem with that, that Bud had a reflection, he said, if Hewitt's gonna be that good, he's done it years ago.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's really, I'm really excited and the pain is gone.
Thank you, Lillian, thank you. Thank you, Brunson kids.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Should I get another piece? Took some of your food. Allow me to do that. New business, first reading, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash one, propose Cross Street, Reverend Crossing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This request was brought to us by the Reverend. Uh, this is not anything the city has initiated. It's a little technical, so I'm with your, uh, I'd like to read this. Whereas the city of Darlington owns and maintains Cross Street where it crosses the South Carolina Central Railroad Crossing. Identified as six-three-two-six-nine-seven-W band. Whereas Cross Street, Cross Street Crossing is a non-signalized crossing. The crosswalks and road road signs is only means of providing advanced warning for the crossing man. Whereas the South Carolina Central Railroad in conjunction with the Janice and Wyoming Railroad Engineering Services proposing requests Darlington City Council to close the Cross Street Crossing and is identified by the Federal Railroad Administration as a redundant or closely spaced crossing. There are three crossings, two others have much better signals. Um, they call this a redundant, it's within twenty-nine hundred feet and the other two, and they requesting that we close this. This will take two readings and we'll also have to have a public forum.
And they'll, they'll be the ones going to do the work and close it up, huh?
Yes, sir. We'll handle the, we will handle the road part, they'll handle the railroad part.
But, I mean, is this something permanent?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we all pretty anything alternate?
No, ma'am.
I mean, rather the only way for the residents on that street would be to go to use the fifty-two bypass?
Yes, ma'am, they'll, they'll have to use fifty-two bypass. But that is, if I remember correctly.
I mean, it seems like we should come up with something else.
Again, this is the request of, of the railroad, this is not.
But we don't have to do this, right?
You do not have to do it there.
Oh, okay.
This is when you pass the Ford place, you come around the curve there, that's the crossing.
Yes, and I've looked, Lisa, there's what, two, I believe, two or three houses back there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, we've sent notifications to probably twelve property owners that are affected. The folks on the north, north of the railroad tracks all have the option, there's a, a, another street there that they can turn. Um, the folks south will have to go south to Governor Williams Highway to exit.
Yeah, but that's still no way, I mean, there's no railroad crossing across the street, across the bypass. Because they go under the bridge. But anyway, I mean, I'm the same person.
Because the railroad, uh, is going to upgrade the crossing at Chestnut. Where the, where the railroad has the two railroads that cross at Chestnut, they're gonna be adding the signal lights and stuff.
If you're at that crossroads, one of the plugs, you can get to the one at Chestnut?
Yeah. They're, they're closing the one that's on Cross Street before you get to the one at Chestnut.
The one that would go across to the pool. Go behind the, with the pool.
Yeah.
I, I got that, but I'm just saying, we're, we're making it, it seemed like we could figure out some kind of alternate a way that they would maybe connect to Henry Street or something.
So you're saying the only purpose for the closing is simply because the railroad has a?
Is to reduce the hazard of having a, a second crossing within that space. And they can't put apparently the same kind of, based on the traffic flow on Cross Street. They can't justify putting, you know, the lights and, and the bars and stuff, but they can justify it on Chestnut Street.
If they close it, does it impede some of the emergency vehicles getting to or along there?
The fire or police and the US all have not said that there will be an issue.
Well, I mean, they're saying that, but if we already say.
We specifically presented to them before we brought it to y'all.
But see, if it wasn't an issue, to me, they would be using fifty-two bypass right now. Because that would seemingly be the easy, if that's such a problem, but it's not. And I just think that that is, uh, I, I don't think that that's fair to the residents there to close it permanently. And since they are using it, I don't see, you know, we don't even have anything of an accident or nothing going on.
This is to reduce the hazard.
When I was in the middle of the question, you interrupted. My question was, and that is a six, I know you're saying they're putting a upgrade on Chestnut Street, of course.
Lights.
Which is fine, and then upgrade on.
That's the only one I mentioned.
So, and that is, there's not a lot of housing, I mean, there's houses on that street. But where that railroad track is located, how many accidents have occurred at that railroad track? To make it a, a problem or hazard?
It's not.
So there's no accident.
Well, the railroad is concerned about, less so about, you know, the vehicular traffic. But if the train were to be turned over or something at that location. I mean, you've got two railroad tracks coming in right there. That's their concern, obviously, you know, that's their concern.
Their railroad track, and that has been, they've been using that railroad track for fifty years and they haven't wrecked yet.
I'd prefer they not wreck. They continue to not wreck.
But I don't see the necessity to.
The only other, as far as alternatives, the only alternative would be for us to buy property and make a road to connect Cross Street to some other street.
I mean, we could connect it to Henry.
The objective is to leave the street the way it is.
Yeah.
And not close it up because there's no hazard.
I would, I would assume, I agree, I agree with Mrs. Backus and Mrs. Reed that it's gonna be a hindrance to those people. Uh, I, I feel like I see what the railroad track is probably gonna do because as I was gonna ask also the same thing she's asked is, was, were there any accidents? There probably never has been an accident there, but probably what they're trying to do is get it to where there are no crossings, cross railroad track without a signal light. Instead of a signal light, so then they gotta open, they still always have an open sore there.
And that's very likely.
Potential chance because you're gonna have a, a railroad crossing there compared to just an open crossing, so.
Can we have a representative from there come and speak to us so that we can ask the questions just to make sure we're all on the same page before we do anything? Because I don't feel like we have enough information to make any decision at this time, first one?
Well, well, I actually think we have enough information, I just don't think that that's bad at all, I don't care what you say.
We've already noticed that the public hearing will be next month, hopefully we can get the railroad.
We can do, we can do it one of two ways, we can just table it for the moment. Or we could go ahead and have first reading and title only because you're, you'd have to have second reading, but you'd also have to have, um, an open hearing.
I would, I would suggest, my suggestion was to be the table, because if you go and do it now, then you've still got only a month. That'd be two months to go out and talk to everybody, see if there's any, if there are concerns with it or what's the best way to do it?
And we'll, we'll get a representative from the railroad.
We kind of, coming up here, we're not that sure, when you're out driving, how much blood it is to go down to the next crossroads or how much you put somebody out. We might, you put somebody out, what?
We can table it.
Is everybody fine with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can you?
Yeah, we could table it, I just think we need to get rid of it.
So I need to table that till January. Thank you. All right, Southeast Darlington Historical Survey Bid.
Mayor and Council, the, um, Historic Landmark Commission has been interested in making sure that all areas of the city are, um, catalogued and recognized for the input they've made to the city and to the state. Um, this project, um, would do an architectural survey of Southeast Darlington between Planner's Drive, South Main Street, the cemetery, Old Florence Road, and Joe Lewis. So it's in your packet, here's the map, that kind of shows you that area. We have received funding from the State Historic Preservation Office and Federal Historic Preservation Funds to fund half of this survey. The project represents a continuation of the city's goal to preserve and protect its rich history, one of its major drawing cards for tourism. The project would survey this southeast side of Darlington to gather, organize, and present information about historic properties with photographs, narratives, maps, and drawings in order to identify properties that are eligible to be listed on the National Registry of Historic Places and to identify properties eligible for potential local designation. The project will promote a richer understanding of the city's historical and architectural development and encourage economic incentives for rehabilitation, cultural tourism development, education, and local compliance with state and federal preservation and environmental laws. As I have mentioned to y'all before, the state and federal tax credits for historic rehabilitation is twenty percent. So if it costs you a hundred thousand dollars to fix it and you do it to the standards and get it approved, you're talking about twenty percent of that cost that you would be able to write off as a tax credit over a period of time. So this is a very good financial incentive, um, for folks that may want to redevelop that in that area. About twenty percent of the property in the project area is vacant, in disrepair, or dilapidated. The age of the properties go all the way back to the nineteen hundreds, so there's definitely going to be historic. There's gonna be stories there too that need to be told before they're lost. Demolition, fire, crime could easily wipe out significant properties in an instant. We will be hiring a consultant to prepare and research the properties and produce the survey documents for future development of the area and to be included in the records of the Darlington County Historical Museum. The consultant and the city will partner with the commission to secure, scan, and catalog any materials that are found. A historical keystone in this area, as Miss Backus knows very well, is the Darlington Memorial Cemetery, which is listed on the National Register. And it may help us create a historic district for that side of town in that area. And that could be the keystone of that district, depending on what is found. This designation can help property owners get refunds and tax credits to help historic property owners and alleviate some of the costs of maintaining or rehabilitating those properties. Our goal would be to identify all the properties that we can for potential nomination to the National Register of Historic Places as well as get background information, um, for future economic development of the area. Since the area has, there are considerable vacancies and underutilized space. It's, and you have the investment that Georgia Pacific has made of a hundred and forty million dollars. People are looking at that, that area for investment. And of course, there is railroad access there. So we want to make sure that before any of this investment or economic development takes place, that we catalog and identify these historic stories before they're lost. We will also, uh, on there, you will see the timeline. Y'all will approve the bid for the consultant. January, we will hold a public meeting. In June, we will receive a draft report and survey. And by the end of August, we should have our final report, so this is not a, uh, long, drawn-out process. The project will be funded by six thousand dollars in the planning department budget from line item five ninety-two sixty-five. It's already been approved by council. And the city will put out a, put out a request for proposals. And we received four proposals. The, um, Historic Preservation Funds of six thousand dollars will cover the remainder of the cost. So it's a fifty-fifty match deal. Um, the four proposals we received, Access Preservation, eleven thousand seven forty. Kramer Design Group, eleven thousand nine thirty. Ralph Charles Muldro, twelve thousand. Simons, Young, and Associates, twelve thousand. Stack recommends selecting Access Preservation. The company has worked on grant-funded surveys in South Carolina previously with the State Historic Preservation Office. So they are known to that office, which is, which is the office that basically approves and denies who's gonna be on the registry. That's that first, um, line of approvals they're gonna have to get. She has experience documenting African-American stories and, of course, probably a little state of eleven thousand seven hundred and forty. She's in Columbia, so not too far. We need a motion from Council to accept, um, Access Preservation Bid.
Any discussion? Questions?
Access Preservation, Stacy Ritchie. She previously worked with the city of Columbia as their player, and she's done the downtown Columbia area survey that we did in your downtown.
What was it, eleven thousand what?
Eleven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
I'm just motioning that we accept Access Preservation Bid for Southeast Darlington Historical Survey for eleven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
Ryan, jump in, sweet, that's your background voice.
This background.
Hey, y'all have a second chance.
We can give you any second.
As second.
Okay, second, okay. Those, thank you. See, Mr. Gardner? Hi, Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Council, I look forward to presenting you with this survey soon.
Okay, two thousand twenty-two, proposed city council calendar?
Yes, sir. In your packet, you'll see the, the proposed regular city council meetings for year twenty-two. Um, they were all the, the first Tuesdays of every month, we can always make any adjustments. I know that at some points, the municipal association will have meetings, um, that may conflict with this and we can make adjustments, but this is.
July, July wouldn't be the first Tuesday, July the twelfth.
Right, that was right after the four, but excluding holidays, I should say.
Very good, everybody fine with that?
We can always make adjustments.
Good, any motion to approve?
I move that we approve the twenty-two proposed city council calendar as presented.
Second.
In your packet? This is Mr. Sakers, Mr. Gardner? Very good, Motion carries, thank you. All right, uh, new business, uh, the mended park, new, uh, trees on the square, uh, you were given in the packet. Presentation here, uh, we've been awarded, uh, a five thousand dollar grant from Duke Energy for beautification, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we haven't received the money yet, supposed to receive in some other month or so.
Yes, sir.
All right, but we've got a five thousand dollar grant that we spent for beautification, uh, in the town. And, uh, we are proposing that we use that toward, uh, putting new trees on the square in con, in conjunction with the county. I spoke with Charles Stewart, he's, we're gonna check the city first before he presents it to the, uh, county council and see if we can help work together. They're willing to take all of them down and, um, that's what he's proposed to the county council, um, and put the trees in place. So they'll have about the same amount of cost that we have. The cost that we've gotten so far on the trees, um, to start with, if we had done all, uh, holly trees around the square would have been, uh, six, a little over six thousand dollars. Uh, we took this to the, um, tree committee and they proposed that we alternate in between those. The sugar maple, southern sugar maple tree, we use the southern sugar maple, but a sugar maple tree. Um, so we ain't got an exact price on that yet, but, uh, as a guess, right, this one would be between five and seven thousand dollars. So the city may have to come up with a little bit more than what the grant is, but we're not asking for approval tonight. There's a discussion on this, uh, if everybody's fine with, uh, going forward toward this. January, February is the time that really needs to be, needs to be changed. Um, the city, the illustration that I use is that the car doesn't belong to us, but we drive it all the time. And so it's county property, county's helping us, uh, we would like to try and take this grant toward helping them to replace the trees and. to replace the trees that make our city of Darlington. We've got a lot going on with the other grant, so see if we can make them look even better. Can I give you the illustration of where it says at the bottom of it there? This picture of the trees is not what the trees will look like. The holly trees will look like a big Christmas tree. They're 12-foot tall, the ones we've gone to bid on to put in. We haven't got a price on what size. Sugar maple, we can get, but again, this will be the big bagged trees with the roots in the bag. Keeping the two oak trees that are over next to the LBC Boars area, over next to the Mexican Restaurant, that's where you put hollies on that side and hollies in between the other ones on the other side. And as I said, Charles suggested that they would possibly fix the electrical that's in there also and add water to it. What he's hoping they'll do is he's proposed to council if everything's good with us to work together. So as they said earlier, we would like to try to work together. They're helping us, so my proposal is that we turn it down, which is helping us all.
I don't have an issue with the thought process of it. I just want to make sure that we've done our diligence and the trees aren't going to be something that we're going to have to cut down or going to be invasive or something in the next five years.
I suppose that we took it to the tree committee. That's what they discussed. The largest they get is, I think, 10 feet at the bottom, which would be still way less than what the area is there. So the hollies won't get big. They suggest the sugar maples, the sugar maples will go straight up also, not causing problems. And two oak trees, not like the other oak trees, but the willow oak, which will go straight up, they said, which wouldn't go into the roads. Again, the tree committee is what proposed, is the ones that proposed this type tree with the thought process on it that it would last and it wouldn't be 50 years later, somebody else going, why do these guys do that?
And are they going to go into the existing place where the old trees are coming out?
Correct, those trees will come out. They were derailed, all that, and then the new trees will go.
Oh, okay. So what do we need to do?
This is discussion for tonight. Everybody fine with the? Present it to the county council, county council may say. They were presenting about moving the trees, taking the trees out. So the proposal was that we got this grant. What can we do with the grant? Something that we can do that's, that the whole city uses. And.
Wonder what kind of issue with many trees, roots, sidewalk?
Or taking the ones that's there out?
I don't know. You would come in, just many of them.
That's the same, you're putting the same, we're taking ones out, putting one back in. And all these are supposed to be roots that go down now.
Do we anticipate any structural issues when we pull those trees out and we're removing those roots that are existing now? Do we anticipate any kind of sidewalk damage or anything like that that we're also going to have to come up with ancillary dollars to?
Well, our proposal to the county is that we're going to buy the trees, and then they're going to be the ones that tear the trees out. So again, they start tearing up, and they send somebody there that busts something up, and again, that's their part there. But again, they're just going to be able to derio, they should be able to derio those trees without, there's enough space around it. They shouldn't bother the concrete. Although the concrete now needs to be replaced anyway. Again, there's plenty of space around those trees. And the Bradford pears are already at a point that, what's the rule on the Bradford pears, Lisa? They're supposed to come out.
Hudson Extension has said that pretty much every Bradford pear tree needs to come down in South Carolina. It's an invasive species, and because it mixes, the problem with it isn't the trees that you see on the courthouse. The problem is that it cross-pollinates with your native pear trees and turns them into a hybrid that becomes a thorny mess for anybody who has any kind of acreage, such as farmers and agriculture being so big in South Carolina. They prefer that we just take them all out. I think in 2024, I believe, is when they're going to stop selling them in South Carolina. So you can still unfortunately go to Lowe's and buy them, but.
The Bradford pear trees were taken down on Pig and Wiggly. They brought Pig and Wiggly, and they didn't mess up here. They derided there. Of course, I'm sure they got to derio, they got to go down further to be able to go back and plant something in the exact same spot to make sure they get all roots.
Well, I think we can all agree that the courthouse needs to have some upgrades, so I would have no problem with that.
Present this to county council for them to discuss it. I was just wanting to bring it to everybody's attention tonight. That's about the range that we're looking at. So it may cost the city a few dollars, but the $5,000 grant will take care of the majority of the trees. And then that'll be our contribution to them to help renovate the square to make it go in conjunction with the grant that we're getting also to renovate the whole downtown. All right, very good. Thank you for your assistance. All right, department heads, information from each department head tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll have all the department heads come up just to give you a brief, and council, a brief presentation on what they've been working on recently and what they'll be working on in the future. They'll each have no more than five minutes, and then they'll open up pretty much as you may have. We're in no particular order, so I see Pat first. So why don't the fire department go first?
They're red.
Chief is out sitting.
Red, yeah, red.
Thank you, Mary, council, for the opportunity to come up and speak. Just getting to be able to say a quick overview about some things that we've been working on. The biggest question we've had has been about our inspection process. In June of this year, on July 1st, we want to add and put a daytime fire marshal on. The assistant chief, he's moved over to daytime to help us with inspections. So to kind of give you an overview, if you look in your packet, you've got this sheet that kind of explains about our inspections, how we do them, and what we look for. We have got a lot we're done this time. Again, right up now, we're at 76 businesses inspected this year. Now, someone asks, how do we choose businesses? We will get a list from the front office of all the businesses in the entire city, somewhere in the county. Now, when we get a list, this includes people who have landscaping businesses, plumbers, and roofers. If you have a business inside your home, which there are a lot of, we really generally do not go into your home and do inspections. Now, when we do the first business license, we will help out and go do that and make sure the fire extinguishers are in there and smoke alarms. But we try to hit businesses as they come in for inspection and get their permits. Instead of doing it January, January, if someone opens a business up this week, we have until this time next year to go ahead and try to get them re-inspected. And we've also put another fire marshal in place. One of my captains, one got certified, so now there's three of us. So hopefully, we will knock this process out a lot faster and a lot quicker. If you look on your sheet, it tells you some of the things we look for. Fire extinguishers are a big one. We walk into a place, and they don't really get inspected every year like they're supposed to. We talked about exit and egress problems. These are things that we see, and if you notice, like, we've had to shut down a couple stores. Around Christmas time, they started getting a lot of inventory in, and they really blocked the lanes up. Well, this is a hazard. When someone, that store is packed full of employees and also customers, and we get a fire, it's hard for the employees and the customers to get in and out. So these are violations. The fire marshal will go in and they write citations for it. Now, the citation's there. So far this year, we have not wrote one actual dollar fine per people. And my theory is this, I'd rather educate people than try to charge them money. We educate them, seems to work a lot better and work with them to get it done. The fines or the violations can range from zero days to correct to 30 days to correct, depending on severity of the violation. If we walk into your business and your fire extinguisher's out, well, if it's still there in the green and the tag's out by a few months, we're not going to ask you to shut down immediately. We're going to give you 30 days to correct it. But if we walk in and your fire suppression system is down, you've got extension cords hanging from the ceiling, and your back doors are chained with locks, we're going to shut you down immediately because it's an immediate life hazard to your employees and also the customers. So as I said, I've listed all this in here, what we've got. Other things we're working on, we're working on replacing some equipment and gear and things that we need. The ballistic vests that we have purchased are on order. They should be here hopefully by the end of December. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Now, Charles had been given the authority when he went in to do more than just check fire extinguishers for the fire department. Also to check to see if business licenses are done.
Check the business license form and get up with Sheila in the front office and make sure they're okay.
And keep a list of that, as far as, check 50, and 25 are good, 25 weren't bad.
Yes, any issues we have with the business license, Charles, they do go to the front, correct? He'll talk to Lacy and Cheryl and Ms. Gloria and actually get it all straight.
Do you follow up on it?
Yes. And if we do have to, for instance, we've had an issue with one of the stores uptown. Any decision we make, reference to helping shut a building down or having to close the door, it's not a decision Charles makes, I make. It's between Charles, the fire marshal, myself as the fire chief, Ms. Sheila with codes, and the city manager. All of us meet together before we make any harsh decision to do anything. We take every angle in consideration. Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let your stand up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I know that there isn't nothing going on with recreation, but I know the big question is what's going on at our land at the sports complex. So I have talked with our surveyor, Mr. John Hesler. He's made a promise that we will have the topographical survey hopefully by Christmas. Of course, every time I talk to him, he's backed up. He's having to go back out there. Now, it's not the survey where they tap a post and shoot that. They've had to cut grid lines through that 116 acres. So they're going from one point, cut trees down through. At one point in time, Councilman Gardner went to Charles Bailey back there and asked who was hunting the property. I guess he thought somebody was cutting chute lanes in there. But they're getting to the end of the survey. And I've talked with Derek after the first of the year. He wants to meet with me and council to sit down and prioritize what you want done first. And at that time, he should be able to come in with some numbers as far as a budget goes to start moving forward and getting them all rolling in the next 12 months of getting something done. So that's where we are. I want to move forward with it. I want to get the surveys done, get that into Derek's hands, and he's going to give us a budget so we can get rolling on the sports complex.
Well, citizens want to know, and we work for the citizens, so.
Absolutely.
City manager, so we all fall down here. So we just want them to know that we're not wasting any time, but at the same time, there are people that rule slag on you, so.
We.
I don't mind calling anybody, it doesn't matter who I irritate. And so the same with y'all, just keep calling them. I'll make sure that they're standing right behind each other on the ass.
Every time he answers the phone, and it's John, every time he answers the phone, it's a heavy Sully, I'm getting to you. And I feel his pain, I do. He's got a lot to do out there. We're still waiting on the delineation to come in, which is going to tell us where all the wetlands is and what type of wetlands that any is out there. So I mean, it's not, we're not just sitting on the property. We're not just sitting on the property. There's a lot going on, even though it looks like there's nothing allowed.
I suppose we just want citizens to know that we're.
Absolutely.
Because I tell everybody, council, never draw your feet since day one.
I wish we could say, and it'd be done, but we can't do that. It's not one of those situations.
This is a little bit more about just with the city and the participation, if you would. Kind of let us know where we are. I mean, are we seeing the same kind? I'm just concerned about our kids and activities.
With our activities? And I don't know why, it's not just Darlington. COVID hurt participation numbers everywhere. I mean, and I can tell you that because I know it hurt in Harshville. Lamar's numbers went down. And I attribute it to the younger people because they found something else to occupy their time, whether it be video games, whether it be a job, you know, something along those lines, schoolwork. I mean, it's, but they're coming back up now. We've seen it in football where the teams might not have been the same, but the number of participants was about the same. Basketball, our numbers are down a little bit, but Harshville's has come up this year. So we're seeing it trend back. The only thing that's not trending back right now is our non-athletic program. And it's twofold. One, the courthouse has been using one of our buildings. That was our main hub for court. And they'll be moving out completely into this month. So we're looking to grab that building back full-time and possibly put our offices back over there. But what we gained in that process is another building that is being utilized heavily in the mornings for walking. So we'll have two places now that are going. We're looking at getting back into the travel scene after the first of the year with our seasoned citizens, taking them to lunch and shopping and such. But it's just coming back over in Harshville. We had seven ladies with seven seasoned citizens over there today that did lunch. But as far as traveling to crowded places, there's not really that big of an interest in that that we've seen. But numbers are trending back up. It's looking good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, I was asked to give you an update on several things. One, the status of the comprehensive plan. The PD Council of Government, the COG, they've been drafting our new comprehensive plan since January of this year. The date on the plan is set for 2035, which is when the city turns 200 acres old. So we want to keep that in mind as we think of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, where we want to go. Of the 10 elements of the plan, six are already written, and a draft was included in your packet. There's also a draft up front at the water department if any member of the public would like to look at it. Staff are asking for community input in a variety of ways, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting. We are having a community survey. We have the surveys up front at the water department. There's a place to pick them up and drop them off here at City Hall every day that we're open. We will also be at Joe's Grill, as mentioned, for two hours each Friday morning in December and January from 7:30 to 9:30, obviously excluding Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. We chose the location to be stationary so that it would be a consistent time. So if somebody maybe could come pick up the survey or pick up a couple, take them to somebody, and possibly bring them back. Also, this makes it easier for somebody to schedule something that's consistent in the same time and place.
What are the dates again, December what?
It is every Friday in December and January from 7:30 to 9:30, excluding holidays.
Lisa, what is the form, what that means?
So that is more of a one-on-one conversation style. Some people are not comfortable coming up here and talking in front of a group of folks in a typical public hearing format. And so we are trying to go at it a different way. In all the public hearings I've ever been to, unless you're talking about raising taxes or bills, you don't have a ton of people show up, and they don't necessarily bring a whole lot to the table. So I mean, I've gone to some public hearings where nobody shows up. Probably more often than not, fewer than five people show up to some of these public hearings.
Are there single or multiple facilitators? Is it just you, or is it a group?
I'm there, and the PD COG is there as well this weekend. Now, those one-on-one conversations, also, if anybody would like to go through the survey and discuss, you know, how to swat analysis for the city with me one-on-one, you're welcome to make an appointment to do that. And that's sort of what I'll be doing with some key people in the community. We are working on incorporating this into an online platform. I'm trying to find a way that we can verify that the people who are going online to take the survey are actually from here. from here and not from Wisconsin or Wyoming. That's kind of the, the only hesitancy I have about doing the online thing is that so many times people will be outside of the location and have no connection to Darlington. Not probably my people that used to live here. I'm talking to them, no idea whatsoever. And we don't want that to be incorporated into our plan, obviously. We may have an online survey and send it to business leaders and things like that. But I think that's probably, you know, it'll be a targeted thing. It won't be a public, open thing. But we do, I will come talk to any civic group that would like to, to discuss it. I'm just starting to get out to send that out, that survey out to different civic groups and clubs and businesses, churches, anybody like that I would gladly go and talk with, me or Lindsay over at the COG. Also, we are working on a version of the survey to go in the water bill in January. We just didn't have time to get it into December because we didn't have it. The water bill insert has to be in like on the fifteenth. And so we didn't have time to get it to that point. But it will be going out in the water bills in January. Now, all this survey material will be compiled and worked into the final document that will go to the Planning Commission, and then they'll recommend it and present it to you. We'll present it to you for you to have questions about it. The COG on schedule has been submitting a draft element every month to me and previously to the City Manager and kind of done a Zoom conference going through it. And then every other month, when the Planning Commission meets, they go over those two elements that they completed with the Planning Commission for additional feedback and ideas. Now, they had a little bit of turnover and that's why they got stuck at six elements right now. The person who was actually writing left, and so they didn't train another person. So that's where we stand there. But we needed to get these surveys out and this public input and engagement into the plan anyway, so. Tree removal. To date, we have spent $10,000 with a $20,000 line item. We've removed nine Bradford pear trees, a lean pine tree, and three dying oak trees. My initial plan for the year was to spend $8,600 on removals, $5,600 on planting, and $5,800 on trimming. I like to invest a lot in the trimming because if we spend the money on trimming, we don't necessarily have to spend the money on removals for a decade or so. And of course, it eliminates some of those smaller hazards that might just block the road for a moment, but be an inconvenience. The extra money on planting, typically we don't spend that much planting. So far, we spent $300 planting the arbitrary trees, which we got through a kind of a five grant. Those trees, there were five dogwood trees that were added on Cashwell Street as part to complete that section of the plan for Cashwell Street. And then we added a dozen more trees on Orange and Lucas Streets near the Mobile Home Park to kind of continue filling in that tree canopy. We still have at least one dead tree on the removal list that was planned for this year on North Street, about the library. Typically, all year, I keep a running spreadsheet of tree issues, where it is, who called it in, what the arborist says when I get them to, to come out and look at it, what their professional opinion is, if given or not. Some things is obvious. And so I just kind of keep a running record of that. And if we have, I try and get, wait till we have several together because the pricing for the tree removals or trimming is always better when you have more work for them to do. If they come out to do one tree, to trim one tree, one, they're probably not coming out anytime soon. They'll fit you in. Or two, they'll make the bid so high, you really don't want to go down. So, you know, to save the city money, we wait until we have several lumped together so that it'll be worth the bidder's time to come out and do the work. Vehicle advertising. I am working on a page for the website that details the rules, has the forms, the photos, and all that sort of thing that can be downloaded. To date, however, nobody has asked me about this advertising despite us discussing it in this room three or four months in a row. So I haven't seen any interest in that yet. The Streetscape Grant Award, which was mentioned earlier today, the city was awarded $750,000 for downtown Streetscape improvements, the county paying the match portion of that, of $75,000. These are federal dollars. We will have to proceed according to the federal guidelines, and they do require an environmental review of the project before we can pretty much do anything. The depart, in the meantime, the COG is submitting a bid to procure an engineer. They're gonna send that to us next week, and then we will post that and have it posted for thirty days as required. Additionally, as we go through the process, the Department of Commerce pretty much has to review every step you take because it's federal money. So that's just, it's gonna be a little bit slower than you really want it to go. The grant period is twenty-four months, but the project overall should take a lot less time than that, much more quickly once construction starts. The only foreseeable delays we would have are, you know, if there's some sort of weather-related event, like if we have a hurricane or something like that, or if there's a COVID-related supply chain issue with some of the items. But I don't really foresee that because materials that we need are not in some of the high-denain categories. On your sheet there, it's got the, got a timeline of when you can expect things roughly to happen. Obviously, till the environmental clears, we won't be able to do much more than secure an engineer. By summer, we'll be acquiring property and preparing design and contract bidding documents. By October, November, we should have all of our materials. In August, we should probably have a contract approved. Construction should start about this time next year. And then the project financial monitoring and stuff will go on and project closeout a couple of months later. So, so probably Christmas time next year, that'll all be finished up if we don't have too many delays for weather. And that's all of that. Other planning activities. In the calendar year for 2021, the city has applied for more than $4 million in grant funding and has been awarded over $2.5 million. Three additional grants are going to be submitted in the next fourteen days to extend boardwalks in Williamson Park, to install digital kiosks, to provide history and information to residents and visitors, and to purchase turnout here for the fire department. Grant deadlines come up every month, and we're actively seeking ways to leverage city funds to fulfill the city's needs and working with other departments to coordinate different projects and find the right fit. Because that's usually the problem is you've got to find the right project for the grant that fits exactly what they want. Obviously, in terms of planning, priority is on the comprehensive plan. There are other plans in the works, including an annexation plan, a downtown master plan, and a revitalization plan for Southeast Darlington neighborhood. We're kind of waiting for the historic surveys to be done for Southeast Darlington before we kind of move forward. That's kind of one step on the, on the, on that process to get that plan built. Any other questions?
On the tree removal, the nine Bradford pear trees, that's the ones from Dick and Wiggly, right?
Typically, and four tentacle trees.
That was less than $3,000. That was like $2,700. So you spent $7,000 from taking down.
Those three oak trees, three oak, oak trees are, if they get to be this size, you're talking, if you do them one at a time, they're $5,000 apiece to take down.
Where were the oak trees at?
They were, one was on Cashwell Street, which is a major thoroughfare. Trying to think where the other two were.
Cool and Spain.
Cool and Spain. Thank you. I can't remember where the third one was. Oh, Main Street, on North Main Street. You're all on me, you know. And of course, when the arborist comes out, they also make a determination. They don't say, oh yeah, that tree's dying, it needs to go. They also say, how immediately it needs to go. Like, hey, it could fall tomorrow. Means you need to take it out as soon as possible versus, eh, it'll be okay for a while. So.
So does the tree removal play into the Street Gate since it's all downtown?
The Streetscape Grant?
I mean.
I don't believe that, well, we will be taking out some Bradford pears with the Streetscape in the parking lot on South Main Street and probably on one of Ward and Russell. Not sure if those are, what trees they are. But there, there will be landscaping at both of those locations. And obviously, we will add trees when we can figure that parking lot.
Gotcha.
So my other question is, we spent ten, we spent basically half of the money, correct, on the non-.
Correct.
So $8,600 is what you estimated we spent for removals, so we already overspent that. At the end, closer to July, when our, assuming when our time runs out, do we go ahead and say, well, we got $5,000 left, and there's going to get some trees down, let's plant some trees or?
July is not the time to plant. If we're gonna do any planting, we'll do that kind of in the, in this time of year, February.
I'm saying if you have $5,000 left, then I say at the end in fiscal year.
Usually, I don't have $5,000. Frankly, I, I kind of try and leave a little bit in there because any time there's a big storm, that could blow up that budget in no time.
My question is, is at the end, if there's $50 left in there, what happens to the $50?
We've got to.
Does it roll over? Do we roll over numbers or do we?
No, we don't roll over. My understanding was you not roll over.
I'm saying, so what, it goes into your fund balance.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, at that point, if there was a thousand left, and you said we could go and get two more trees down that, that need to be cleared out, could that have been done? Could that be done?
It depends on the scheduling with the tree folks. And that is, I can schedule them and call them tomorrow to come. And unless it's an emergency situation, I'm put on a schedule, which could be two weeks from now, it could be six weeks from now. And they may or may not be able to tell you which one it's gonna be.
Fiscal year, your end's in June, correct?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. So if in April, we still got, I'm just using a number, $5,000 left, and so it was probably enough that we could take some trees down, is at that point, can we go and start trying to plan to take some trees down because we know it's probably not gonna be a big storm to do?
Usually, around April, I try and get, if there's any money left, I try and do trimming. One, it's cheaper, and two, it saves us in the long term. When we did a big trimming on Cashwell in Spring Woods, Columbian, we did a bigger project area, and we had the arborist survey the trees, marked all of them that need to be trimmed. It was like twenty or thirty trees that needed to be trimmed, and we had those trimmed. And then the next couple of storms, there were no tree limbs falling in that part of town because they'd been trimmed properly in a, in a timely manner. So.
Like on, on Broad Street, Oak, Broad Street, there's still some that, that were down. We took them down, they fell down, but there's still stumps there. So I would like to see that, you know, that cleaned up, if we can add it in there somewhere online.
Well, there is one caveat with the stump removal. They, the tree companies will not remove the stump unless you are removing the sidewalk for them first. So that's an addition. They don't do that. So either city staff has to remove that piece of sidewalk and then coordinate with the tree folks. But they weren't, they weren't. They were just doing just that. They didn't take that roof under that roof, under that sidewalk out.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying the level of damage we're, if we need to find, we just left, we left a jar that's cleaned up and cutting grass growth.
A lot of times, the, the tree folks will not come in because it damages their equipment to be so close to the sidewalk.
Okay. I would like to see the Steve, Charles thoughts.
Oh, I would too. There's a, there's a host of them on Spring Street that I would love to see gone.
Hi.
We need to move on, Mayor. We need to set a procession for you to ask your question. Goodness.
Mayor and Council?
We got all that in the package now.
Right. So everything in the package. So this year, we've collected $245,101.90 in permits, plat reviews, zoning appeals, upcoming demolition. We have 1201 South Main Street, that sold repair shop that the ceiling's been falling in.
Okay.
304 Darlington Avenue, the ceiling, the roof is caved in on that one. And then 155 Tullura Street. We have condemned two houses, the one on Howard, and then another one on Davis Street, some fire. I'm like, we have heard from the Davis Street, they're planning on fixing that house and renting that country. We've cleaned.
Which, which residence?
Davis. If you go down Harper, you take a kind of a left and that turns into Davis Street. It goes to fire there a couple years ago. And they haven't done anything with it. They're saying because of COVID, that anyways, they're gonna renovate that.
You're saying Davis Street?
Davis, D-A-D-I-S.
Where's that at?
Off Harper Street. My truck knows how to get there.
It's west, it's west end.
You go down West Broad and then you turn, right, and then you turn.
Burnt house by Tullura now?
No, no. It's up behind Piggly Wiggly. Okay? You know, the little streets that you can, and say from Piggly Wiggly going back to Broad Street, Harper ones from, I can't think of what, the ones where they, oh, Ammar Clinic at, Harper ones from there to Broad Street. And Davis is off that. It's, it's, if you can take a left. It's one of the little streets behind there.
We've cleaned five lots, a couple of streets and sanitation helped us get those cleaned. And we have three more lots that need to be cleaned. Two more are coming out of violation, so we'll have to get estimates on those as well. As a department, we've also started the missing address campaign. I've talked to the fire department, and it's a code that you have to have four-inch numbers on your house. And a lot of our houses are missing that. It makes it sometimes difficult for first responders to know where those are. So as we see those, I've created a postcard to send out to them so that we can get everything numbered. We've also been working in conjunction with Darlington County, who somehow changed addresses and refused to let people pay their taxes because their address was wrong. So.
Yes.
Very exciting. So I've had to go out and get all the information to prove that this is indeed their house, and this is indeed their address and has been for twenty years and please change it back. And that's been across the board in the city line. So we've also been dealing with that.
Sheila, I did want to ask about the letters that our residents are receiving regarding registering their, the properties that has, that they're not living in, their actual property that has buildings on them.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, tell me, okay, I, I read one of the, the letters. Of course, there is a fee. Tell me about that. Why, I mean, here's the question that comes to me. We're already paying taxes on it, on, on our property. And why is it that we have to pay another fee to register it?
Because the program was brought to Council and Council approved it. It's to, the idea is to entice people that have vacant properties and vacant buildings to do something with them. To fix them, to sell them, to, but, but the problem is, is that we're having
Cleaning up.
Cleaning up. They're not, you know, a lot of it is air property. They're not doing anything with them. They're overgrown. And so it's becoming a problem. So the, the thought process was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, because this, the letters came out of the Planning Department, is that we're trying to get a count. is that we're trying to get a count, a database of all the vacant properties that we have. And once we have that database of all the vacant properties that we have, we can go through and say, "Okay, what are you gonna, you know, you want to have the vacant property, you know, it's a, you know, a hundred dollars for the registration." And then if it's vacant, but it's not, let the people know, it's not, your grandma doesn't go to the hospital, and now all of a sudden, it's a vacant property, and we want money. It's gonna be something that's more of a long-term, when it looks unkept, when it, you know, the grass has grown up, you know, nothing's happening with it. At that point is when we're gonna say, "This is a vacant property," you know. You need to register or do something with it.
Here is some, the two main ones that I want to get clear up and get them answered. They keep this property out. They just need to register, and they don't feel like they need to pay. I mean, I was gonna ask. I said, "They came to me. I said, 'Well, I asked to see if we can get it away,' because it's not grown up. It's just, they need to register." Now, then, the gentleman, another one, this is on Tallulah Street. His mother owns the property, but he got the letters.
It goes, so I believe the letters went to who is on...
Who's living in it, but he's...
Who is on the tax roll.
Yeah, I guess she gave the house to him. But it is, but he doesn't have any other property.
Right.
I mean, he's in the property. I mean, he's living there.
Right.
His mother has several pieces, but this particular one...
Right, so this particular one, he's living in it.
Yeah.
So the letter just says, you know, all they have to do is check the box.
Okay.
It's vacant, or it's occupied, and mail it back. And then it'll go on the database that it's an occupied structure.
Okay, I'll bring that to you.
It doesn't make any difference at that point. It's not gonna be a vacant registered property because it's not vacant.
Gotcha. Okay, all right.
Now, so if a citizen can't pay that one hundred dollars or that four hundred dollars, then what?
So the ordinance reads that they get, it's a misdemeanor, and they get a summons to court.
So we go before the judge, and then the judge would decide.
The judge would make a decision whether to impose any misdemeanor fines, or whatever it's by statute he can impose for a misdemeanor.
Definitely need to get that clear up. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council.
Good evening. Came to you tonight to give you an update on the three grants the city has opened right now. Some issues we have sewer collection, and ask for a purchase order for Limit Street Pump Station. The three grants that we have open right now, the big one, the one million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar grant, Frank Horn Construction moved on site just after our last meeting in November. His superintendent and his general manager have been in contact with me practically every day. They're laying out pipe over on Joe Lewis, Yandy, and Third Street. They have surveyors all over town doing work. And in that, that project, we have the renovations of the Grove Hill Pump Station, which is in an emergency situation right now. I spoke to them several times about it. They have ordered a pump from Ferguson Supply. I've talked to the folks at Ferguson. They promised to get it here by the first of next year, possibly by the end of the month. Frank says he's gonna pull his folks out. We're gonna start it all till, but because this one's in an emergency situation, to pull his folks off, put them into Grove Hill and get that pump going for us first. And they've also received their first pay request today. They showed up today for that. The next one is the Farm Street Grabby Sewers and Allen Street Pump Station renovations. We're in the design phase of that. I have worked with our engineers, Davidson Brown, and their surveyors, and we should be able to get that into a bid package before the first quarter ends of 2022. The third grant is the Allen Street Force Main and Old Florence Grabby Sewer. That's a, that second one I wanted to stop by Farm Street, that's a million-dollar grant. It's a million, twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that's from the Community Development Block grant fee. The third one is the Allen Street Force Main. This is the one we pushed through right the last day in September. It eliminates a sewage pump station we got down in Bowland Manor, puts in a grabby sewer there, and addresses a lot of issues with the Allen Street Force Main that actually runs up Curvin Street. We've had a lot of repairs over there we've made since I've been here. We spoke to, Mr. Priggin, Mr. Payne and I spoke with Ria folks last Thursday on the second. We got some instructions from them, and we've submitted some documents to them. And I was on the phone with them today, and they said that we should have a notice to proceed by the end of the week.
All right.
Also, at that time, we closed the East Broad Street Sewer Main renovation with the last submitted documents there. Another big issue is sewer collection. It started actually back in October. It's probably been ongoing here for many, many years. It's ongoing all over the state, all over the country. It's with these flushable wipes, disposable wipes. There's some cities that have outlawed them completely. We do have a sewer ordinance that says nobody can put anything in the sewer that will damage it. And these things are beginning to be more than just a nuisance to the town. They're beginning to be very expensive for us. We started on a clogged sewer line on East Hampton Street in October, and we didn't finish till the first of December. We went over there every day from November the fifteenth to the first of December and pulled bowling ball-sized clogs of these flushable wipes out of the sewer line over there. We ended up with something in the neighborhood of three thousand pounds of these flushable wipes that we pulled out of the sewer line. That sewer line's only two hundred and seventy-five feet long. It only serves four houses. Two are on Urban Street, two are on East Hampton. There is another house on East Hampton, but it's not occupied. And we actually had to tear out a manhole out of the middle of the street because it was one built back in nineteen oh eight, and it was unworkable. We couldn't get in there and use our modern machines to clean. Our guys worked, and our staff worked, and I worked, Thanksgiving evening, Thanksgiving day, Thanksgiving weekend, two weekends in a row there every day. That's a huge issue, and we'll talk about it again. We'll visit it again several times before we train closure to it if we can, I hope. But we gotta, gotta get the word out. Stop using disposable flushable wipes. They may be flushable, but they don't desentrate the sewer, and it causes huge problems. Last thing I want to talk to you about while I was here tonight was to go ahead and approve a purchase order for Limit Street Pump Station. We've been on an emergency situation over Limit Street quite a while now. We've got a diesel pump operating over there, and we're having to change out parts of it, things like the discharge line. It is not designed to be worked every day, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So we've had to change out that plastic line several times. We're gonna have to continue to do that. I'd also like to go ahead and buy that diesel pump, keep in our inventory for future issues that we may have. I'll come back to you all with that later. But tonight, I've got two bids on just the pumping apparatus to go in there. Now, we looked at rebuilding this pump station several different ways. One way was to put in a generic pump station that we also want to do for seven of our other pump stations, and that's at a cost of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. I don't really have that in the budget to spend. I don't have enough money in sewer line maintenance or sewer line issues to cover the cost of rebuilding it as is. I got together with Don Payne, who you all met one night here, and him and I scratched our heads and got together some figures, and we think it's gonna be around fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to rebuild it as is. The first increment of that, and we're gonna purchase that from parts here and there and y'all, from all our different suppliers. And Mr. Payne will have a sizable amount of labor in there, too. The first component of that is, are the pumps, the two pumps. And I've got two bids, one from Tim Carver, and it's at about eleven thousand dollars. And I've got one from Clearwater Incorporated for the Andor Equal pump. Tim Carver has the OEM, the original equipment manufacturer. And Clearwater Inc. is eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. And I've got the two bids here, if anybody wants to look at them.
So, okay, you've been through everything, and this is the best route to take?
I think so. It's the least expensive way. To rebuild the pump station as is, I sure want to put in those generic pump stations in the other locations. And for the one that we plan to do at McLeod, and we'll talk about all that a little later on. But this is the best way to go for today, and I think it will last us quite a while. I think we'll get good service out of it as long as it's maintained correctly, and we pull some preventive maintenance in that area and on that pump station, like we should all our pump stations.
So can you tell us very specifically what it is you're asking us for tonight?
A purchase order for, to purchase pumps for eight thousand, one hundred and ninety, I'm sorry, eight thousand, eight hundred, fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents on Clearwater.
He's asking you to give the city manager permission to sign off on that. Because that's above my threshold.
And this is all of your homework? You've done your due diligence? This is your best opinion of what we need?
It is.
Shouldn't we be getting three bids on everything? I think we require three bids, not two bids.
Well, I couldn't get anybody else to bid on it that could get a pump here next year. These folks are looking at getting it to us in eight, ten weeks, and the other folks are at sixteen weeks. And the other folks told me they didn't think they could get it in 2022. I said that we would have to have it in four months, is what I gave folks.
And if you need to have, I think that should be in writing from them that they can't get it in 2022. We need, the requirement is three bids. And I question that...
Is that requirement anything above a certain dollar amount? I believe, is it ten thousand dollars?
No, it's five thousand dollars. Everything that we do over five thousand dollars require a bid. And I question also, the work that's being done, is all the work that's being done in that water department being properly did it out? Because I seem to remember, last meeting you came, you said the same thing about some work that Davidson Brown is being doing in that water department. And seemingly, none of this is being bidded out. It's just being handed to Davidson Brown, and that's not proper. So why is none of this stuff being bidded out in that department?
I don't know what specific work you're talking about, but I'm following...
Design phase of something on Farm and Allen Tree.
Okay. You are the city of Darlington engaged Davidson Brown to do that design work prior to my coming to work here.
When did we get, I don't think so. Oh, it's supposed to be bid it out.
You all started that in March of this year.
You just give Davidson Brown permission just to do work in the city. That's been the question for the last four to six months, years. We've been, well, longer than that. That they've been questioning just handing work to Davidson Brown. It's been years and years and years of questioning. And you seem to be doing the exact same thing.
Because my understanding that, and this was long before I got here, but Davidson Brown has been the city's engineering consulting firm for decades, I believe.
Doesn't matter. Any work's supposed to be bid it out. I don't care whether they're the city engineer or not. You can't just hand them work. Our procurement laws require that all work is bidded out. That's why you're seeing them missing it now, because you've just been handing them work.
I have not signed any purchase orders that are above my threshold.
I'm pretty sure...
So I am below the threshold for procurement.
I'm pretty sure. I've looked at invoices in that water department for the last, since August. And I've seen a lot of invoices, but Davidson Brown, they ordered it's twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, ten thousand, eight thousand. All that's above five thousand, if I can count.
I have not signed one.
Well, they got paid. Somebody wrote them a check.
Gloria, Mr. Priggin, do you know what she's picking on?
No, I don't know what invoices she's seen, but anything that's turned in from the department is, it's approved. It's in the budget we pay them. So I don't know what invoices she, you know, she booked out. I haven't seen them. But if something came through the water department and they approved it, and it's a budgeted item, they're gonna pay it, just like any other bill.
So Charles, at the moment, let's table the Limit Street project that you're talking about. Let's ask that other firm to give us in writing what she requested, and we will sit on it until we get it. And we will do nothing else unless it's prevented, unless it's emergency management.
And I have another question, just for information for the community. The question of the fire hydrant on Third Street that's leaking, is that gonna get, or is that in motion to be repaired?
Did you submit a work order for it?
I submitted to you in writing on eleven twenty-nine at two thirty PM.
Eleven twenty-nine.
And I submitted it to you, and I submitted it to John Payne.
Is that in the...
Last week.
That the water hy... I'm just asking you...
Last week. I don't know if we created a work order on it or not, but I'll circumvent that. Third Street Fire.
Okay. And also, I'm following up on Farm Street, where the fire hydrant was repaired on Farm Street. And it looked like a five-year-old did it.
Have you gone over there today?
I did. And it's still like a five-year-old did it.
We've gone over there almost every day.
You know, I looked at it today. It's not leveled. It's not smoothed.
Go by and look at it again. We worked over there late this afternoon.
And I went over there on my way here.
We spoke to the neighbor, and the neighbor tells us it's always been a wetlands. It's always been wet there, and it is wet there now. And we can't do a lot with it till it dries out some. But we have, we have taken dirt over there. We have leveled the ground out there. I think we've done a really good job of what we had to work with there, and the neighbor agrees. But you don't agree, obviously. So we'll take a look at it again, but we'll continue with it until we get it, but it's got to have, it's a wetlands. So it pretty much has to repair itself. Now, we'll give it as much help as we can, but...
Farm Street, that area was only soaking wet because that fire hydrant was leaking for a year.
It's, it's wet there now.
Once you all fix that fire hydrant, which is fine, it got fixed, but that person who owned that property, if I came there and I owned that property and it looked like that, I would be upset, because I want to know why you left my property looking like that.
Well, we left it that way because it was wet, and it needed to dry out. And I know that we have been over there several times last week, and at least twice this week. I know we went over there Monday. I know we went over there today, and I thought it looked pretty good today. I've got a picture of it on the phone.
Okay, we'll try to go back a little bit and straighten it out.
We're not through with it. We'll continue with it until we get it right.
I'll check back with you next week.
So what is the problem? What keeps it wet?
It's a wetlands. It's a designated wetlands, and it stays wet, and it stays wet above there, all the way over to the next street. And it drains into a basin there and creates a spring on the other side of the road that has a defined ditch. There's a creek that runs around behind those apartments and catches all runoff from those apartments also. But it's a wetlands. It's probably the headquarters of that creek, and it's a spring, and it crosses the road, Farm Street, just below this fire hydrant. We repaired. The lot is, in my estimations, is unbuildable because it is a wetlands. It stays wet all the time. And it's higher ground. A fire hydrant is here, and the ground is higher. A fire hydrant is here, and the ground is higher, and it's wet. So it's been wet for decades, maybe centuries there. It's a wetlands. And if you go over there and look, you see wetlands, wetlands plants out there.
Thank you, Charles. And we've got one more, Alex, and who's gonna be a brief?
I'm already on the area council. I was asked to come to y'all tonight to give you a schedule for the back truck. The back truck itself, it's hard to come up with a schedule for the back truck. Mr. Charles Schubert and I have been working on it for a while, trying to figure out how we can come up with a schedule. Unfortunately, he's had to use it a good bit lately for sewer issues, as he just stated. He's had several sewer issues that he's had to use it for. And then myself, the driver that I have, or the operator that I have for the back truck, he also operates the sweeper. We had people that were wanting, council members that were wanting a sweeper out on the street. Citizens wanting a sweeper out on the streets, so we put a sweeper out on the street. Well, he can't operate both trucks at the same time. So what we've tried to do is leave the truck available for Mr. Charles Schubert while he's having all these sewer issues and, you know, truck. But right now, he hadn't been trained on it. Now, he does have an operator that can operate it. He is not, he hasn't been trained on that truck, I don't think, but he's operated back trucks in the past. And he's the one that's been operating for Mr. Schubert whenever they need. So, but when we do take the back truck out, and that's what I was telling Mr. Payne, it's hard to come up with a schedule, because when we take the back truck out, we try to focus on an area and get that area clean, flowing, and satisfied that it's either flowing properly or if we find an obstruction or a collapse, if it's a state storm drain, which ninety percent of our storm drain system is state storm drains, we notify the state, get them to come out and look at it, so they can figure out what they need to do to try and repair it. So whenever we take it out to an area, we may be there a day, we may be there a week, we may be there two or three weeks. It's just however long it takes. And we do know that we've got some issues in some areas. We've got some obstructions, not exactly sure what it is. We have ideas as to what it may be, but we don't know exactly what it is. That's why we came to you a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, actually, and asked about trying to buy a new tractor for the camera, so that we can actually put this camera in the hole and see what we've got. And it might be something that we can handle in-house, might be something we have to, you know, contract out, I don't know. But without that proper tractor for the camera, we can't figure out what some of our problems are. But once we get some of these sewer issues behind us, we get the fall behind us, and assuming leaves aren't falling and everything else, we don't have to run a sweeper as much, we'll try our best to come up with some kind of schedule for the back truck to let y'all know where it's gonna be at. I'm not gonna say we can tell you what day it'll be there, but give you a, you know, it's gonna be in this area now unless something major happens. It'll be there once we get that area cleaned, then we'll be going to another area. And that's what we have been doing since I took over stormwater in August of two thousand and nineteen. You know, we've been trying to focus on areas instead of just sporadically hitting areas when people call in, because if you go and hit this storm drain today and you hit this one tomorrow, you're really not accomplishing anything. You've got to get the whole area opened up and flowing from start to finish.
Just kind of short chase here. So what I'm asking for is a grid, okay? Section one, section two, section three, section four, how many sections you put it in? And this is where we're gonna start. They're gonna start here, but of course, if there's emergencies, let's use the truck. And then should be able to come back and say, well, because if our customers come to us, which is our client, our citizens, they come to us and say, well, when's the last time you cleaned Linder Street? When's the last time you cleaned Broad Street? I don't know, okay? Well, I should be able to look at them and say, well, Broad Street was just cleaned two months ago, but they have, they fixed the clean Linder Street next week. But they had a clean Linder Street next week because five things got in the middle of it. There was an emergency over here, now we lost a driver or a resident, now we're just next on the list. So it's just have a schedule laid out, and so that way we're prioritized to make sure that each section's getting cleaned.
Okay. Like I said, once we get all these sewer issues behind us and the fall, we'll try our best to get something like that scheduled. But in the meantime, we're gonna let you know when we go to an area, we pretty much keep up with where we're going, and how long we're there, what we find. We've been mapping stuff, we've been putting obstructions on the map. We're gonna have to share that information with you, so you can pass it on to the citizens when they call. We'll probably have pretty much all the information they're looking for.
Like the street sweeper, you know, I've asked, I've asked for years now, you know, can the guys go out Blood Streets and the street sweeper go by early morning? And is there a schedule for the street sweeper? Yeah, I know, I have eleven gems. I know what it is to put somebody on the schedule. And every time you put somebody on the schedule, say, oh, that's a work perfect. Listen, you're gonna do this, and you're gonna be over here, you're gonna bounce around, you're gonna check all my gems for me and everything else, and all of a sudden, five people are out and everything gets turned upside down. But then we probably try to go back to that schedule. So again, and just looking forward to be consistent as much as possible. And as we grow, and we hopefully have it to where you don't have to share a driver, you can have that one guy, only he does wake up every morning and sweeps the streets. But, you know, or the streets being swept, so that we don't have to have it up in the middle of town trying to blow and stop and blow and stop. And it's just, I'm pretty capable of things.
Well, I can say right now, I can put a sweeper on the road, and Howard, after he gets by, it looks like he hadn't been through that. So, I mean, that's, I mean, you can tell from the city street, on the streets, on the side of the road, everything else. But right now, it's just a rough time of the year to try to, we're trying to sweep their roads. But we're working for doing it. I mean, he's spent a bunch of time, Pearl Street, Main Street, Castle Street, the square. I mean, he's been trying to keep it swept up.
We have a set schedule when they're supposed to pick up the trash, but we have a set schedule for when the truck should be coming out. I know, I know, I went to Baltimore one time for a business trip, okay? And if you didn't move your truck that morning, they were gonna tell your truck, because at five o'clock in the morning, they will sweep that tree, that street, because it was scheduled to be there. So that's what I ask for is set time. When the lukes will be out of there at five o'clock in the morning, I go about sweeping, and if I wanna go help him blow, I'll blow it out to him, or I'll run my wave at him. But again, if something happens, you know, his schedule has to change. But, you know, try to prevent, try to schedule a set time for what's with the truck to be out, for back trucks to be out there on the steps back.
We'll get to your schedule.
Yeah. We need some old manpower, we need to talk about that.
We need to talk about that in the next budget for ourselves.
And his local people are there.
You have any other questions?
I also asked you about the back truck several times, you and Mr. Payne, about why the back truck is not being seen in South Darlington. But I also, we, you, myself, and Mr. Payne discussed Jessamine Chestnut and Reed Street. And you and Mr. Payne was supposed to give with Treasurer Scarborough about Jessamine Chestnut and Reed Street. So what was the results of that?
Well, I've talked to Mr. Scarborough numerous times. We've had scheduling conflicts. We actually have a meeting scheduled in the morning at nine o'clock.
Who have a meeting in the morning? You and who?
Me. If Mr. Payne joins us, Treasurer Scarborough and Kevin Williams.
Okay.
We're meeting at nine o'clock in the morning to discuss those areas. I have taught, like I said, taught the treasurer several times, with him being out on vacation, holidays, scheduling conflicts, then, you know, when it might be convenient for me, he's had a meeting or whatever, vice versa. So, but we are meeting tomorrow morning. We were supposed to meet yesterday, and Treasurer had something come up, a meeting come up. So we decided to do it tomorrow at nine o'clock in the morning.
Asking about the ditches on the back pass too, that I've been asking about. I just keep getting excuses from him too, short people, and, you know, all I ask from everybody, and again, I'm not upset with anybody, but my name is on plate, their name's on the plate. And all I ask from everybody, and I keep saying this over and over, is just give us a date and try to stick to that date of when it's gonna be done. Same with DOT. I've asked them over and over, when's the ditch gonna be done? Okay, well, give me a date, okay? Somewhere in March of next year, okay? January of next year, something, you know? So schedule it, write it down, try to, everybody try to stick to it and make it accomplished. And then if somebody comes back and says, well, when's the last time you were at, when's the last time you were at Farm Street, Moon Street, or Broad Street? Then you can go back and tell them this is the last time I'm there. Just ask them, if you don't mind, because I keep, I've called Kyle Berry to also to address it with him also. Because, you know, just like that, fifty back pass hasn't been cleaned in years. It makes us so bad, and we can't go out and do it. So we're dependent on DOT, you wanna do it. And a lot of work that you're having to do is dependent on, you're doing this DOT's responsibility, but we're doing it because it's in our town.
So the last question I got is from Mr. Payne about Jessamine Chestnut and Reed. At our last work of meetings, I asked for a cost estimate for repairing those three streets. Did you get the cost estimate either from Davidson Brown or from Allen?
I mean, we do not have that yet.
So it's been going on for two months. How long is this gonna take to get an estimate cost?
Start off with, the storm drains you're referring to, all those are state storm drains.
All of them on our other missus state storm drains that we bought executive session to. We don't own none of them streets on that list.
All right, well, we meet tomorrow. Me personally, I think we've spent enough of our money doing engineering work for the state's projects. So we need to get them on board and let them spend some of their money to handle some of their storm drain issues. I mean, I don't mind helping them, but we don't need to go into hole trying to fund their project for them.
So you only got a problem with that one project, but all the others you bought in executive session was also state streets. Y'all had a problem bringing them to executive session.
Which ones did we bring to executive?
Broad Street, Sisron Street, Country Club, all those are state streets. We had a problem bringing a bid for them. Now you got a problem with Jessamine Chestnut and Reed getting a bid. Now we don't wanna help them because it's those streets. No, uh-uh, no. And we can help the other ones, we can come up with a bid for those streets. And this has been going on for too much. I've asked the same question too much, and I don't understand why Mr. Payne can't get it done. All you gotta do is ask Davidson Brown to come up with it, they came up with a bid for those ones, or ask, or Allen.
I met with Davidson Brown last week, and Mr. Schubert, and I asked them to expand on those numbers, so I should have some embarrassing.
Okay.
Having an executive session. Brief. Any council comments? I would like to thank Ms. Bailey, Lisa Bailey, Ms. Bailey, for jumping on board the other day for being able to put Mr., uh, what rank did I say?
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt Scott, thank you, is the grand marshal. Grandma Franklin, the grand marshal, it's been a long night getting hot up here. Grand marshal for the parade the other day, and I asked her quickly to jump on that horse, and she did that, and I do appreciate her doing it for me. Made it look really good, and he looked really good as the grand marshal, and well deserved for him also. And thank her for that. I think all the department heads and what they're doing to try to help us, get us outflowing beneath all our issues and try to make everything better for the city doors. All right, no further questions or comments? All right, do I have a motion to go into executive session for discussion of contractual matters?
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'm sure executive session, I'll say.
Please.